You all received the amendments from the House meeting and the appropriate recommendations to the amendments presented. Matthew, in the second. Mr. Dawson. Any discussion? Yes. Okay, now it comes to time for the participation of Mr. Archer to comment.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to Mike Trace Middle School. I'm daylock superintendent. We are going to rest this evening with what you have to say. Our board building, like most other school districts, does not publicly talk about personnel issues at this point. That is something the board does in executive session. I want to update you on what's happening surrounding the issue where one of our special needs students was mistreated and spoken disrespectfully by an elderly teacher. There is much we are unable to speak about publicly because of the family and the student involved simply do not allow us to do so by signing or waiting. But I can say this: Our primary mission, Mike Trace Middle School District, is to protect and educate your children. When someone falls short of that mission, which happened in this case, you must take immediate action. We did so. As soon as we received verified proof that the student was mistreated by staff, we acted immediately. We placed the student in a different learning environment, and there had been no more incidents or allegations. We demanded the resignation of the eight involved. When we listened to the recording, it was very clear that the majority of the hurtful things said were said by the eight. With respect to the teacher involved, we also acted quickly, building principal verbal discipline, and I later disciplined the teacher. We then referred the teacher to the Higher Department of Education, the Office of Professional Conduct, and after investigation spanning five months, that office ordered the teacher to take remedial training, and we will enforce that order. I know many of you are outraged by what has happened to this student. Let me be very clear: So am I. Anger, betrayal, hurt for the child, have all occurred. As a father and someone who has spent nearly three decades in education as an educator, I get very angry when students are mistreated. Tonight, the board will consider the teacher's request for a continuation of her maternity leave, which is called Child Care Leave, unpaid leave of absence, through the rest of the school year. I am recommending to the board that they approve this, that they actually have no choice. The teacher is entitled to this according to board policy. The board will meet later this evening in executive session to discuss personnel issues, including discipline. We do not anticipate any disciplinary decisions to be made this evening. If and when the board does take action, we will be done so in public, and we will provide you with that information and access to all public records at that time. Again, walking to Mike Trace Middle School, we do invite your comments and concerns to be issued tonight, so that we can begin to get the process that's important. Mr. Carter has some now comments to make regarding public participation.
Whatever the approach that you want to discuss something, I would like for you to tell us your name. That's just a request, you don't have to. And your address. That way, we will know, and we, by the way, are recording this meeting, if anything is said, that we will know exactly what has been said. It's not for me here saying, but you'll have them on tape. So we're recording each and everything that is said during the meeting tonight. So at this time, if someone would like to approach the board, it's time, we'll hurry to do so.
Good evening, school board.
My name is Josh Brown. And from Columbus, Ohio. I graduated from high school in 1997, Greenview High School. At that point, my parents moved to Washington Courthouse. I went to Washington Courthouse in Wilmington. And my two younger brothers both graduated from Mike Trace High School. After I was out of high school, I joined the Army. And after I was out of the Army, I came back and live here in your community here. At that point, I went to Ohio State University, got a bachelor's degree, went to law school in the University of Toledo. And I just graduated, and I'm taking the bar exam in January. And I work at the Ohio House of Representatives. And the reason I play this is because I consider myself to be somewhat of a success story considering that I had a lot of problems in high school. When I was in high school, I cared a lot about baseball. I was a very good baseball player. In fact, I played baseball here in Miami Trace several times when I was in high school. And when I was in high school, my coach made it very difficult for me, and he bullied me frequently while I was playing baseball, and he would embarrass me in front of the other players, say me things, and make me run laps for no reason sometimes. And it was a big problem for me, and it was emotionally scarring. And when I joined the Army, I was, my first vacation was in Korea, and I'm still awake at night, and sometimes unable to sleep because I was still so angry about what had happened when I was in high school. And so, the thing about, that's different for me, though, is that I had a support network when I was in the military. I had mentorships and leadership, and I was able to see psychologists. And over time, I was able to learn to deal with that, with that problem of the anger resentment I felt from the bullying I had experienced in high school. So it took me several years, though, dealing with that, with professional help, to really get over it and learn to cope with the anger and resentment. And there was certainly a maturity process involved, there was just one part of just growing up. But at the same time, it was emotionally scarring, and this particular story touched me very deeply because it was even worse than what I had experienced. And I think that a special needs child has so much more to deal with than I did to start with. The thing that gave this school league power over me was that I cared about baseball. So I'm looking at a special needs student, what does she care about? She probably cares about just being left alone and just learning and being in a friendly environment. So it hurt me very deeply. And I wanted you to know that I believe that Christie Will should be fired for what she did. And the reason why is because I understand that firing a teacher is a big deal, and it's very difficult. In fact, at the Ohio State House, we deal with that issue every day. But I believe that the process of firing her is not as bad as the process of recovering from bullying. The process of recovering from major bullying can take years, and it can take years with professional help. So I urge you to go through that process, thinking in the back of your mind through that process, that we're doing this so that a child doesn't have to go through the process of dealing with recovery and the issues that are involved in that. And finally, my last request to this board respectfully, my understanding, having read the Columbus Dispatch and seen the reports that were released, was that there was an investigation conducted before the parents made this recording and did this investigation on the Army. I believe whoever conducted that investigation or ordered it and did not find anything should also be fired as well. I believe that it's the responsibility of the leadership of this school to conduct those investigations thoroughly, and I believe that you have clear evidence that this investigation was not conducted thoroughly. It may have been conducted carelessly, so at the very least, there should be an investigation into the investigation, assuming the reports are true. I can only go off what I read in the papers. I believe that this is an incredible embarrassment for this community, and it's where I'm from. When I'm in Columbus, I'm frequently asked where I'm from, and I say I'm from, you know, the area between Columbus and Cincinnati, around the outlet mall, which is what, you know, people are familiar with. And people say, you know, what's it like down there, what do people like down there? And for me, the thing that defines this part of our country more than any other isn't, it's certainly not good weather, it's not a good geography, we don't have mountains, we don't have beaches. But unlike the people who live in those areas, one thing we can say proudly is that this is a great place to raise a family. I was raised here, I'll raise my children here someday. I think this undermines that, and I think your reaction to this is going to be, in the broad scope of things, what people will look at as to whether what I'm saying is true. Is this a good place to raise a community, a family? When they ask that, looking at this situation, the question will be, you know, we've had things happen and everything, but how did you react to it? Did you say, "We will not tolerate this type of behavior, and we will exclude that type of person from our community"? I believe we should have, and that is why I drove an hour down here in my own time to testify for you, and why, very nervously, I'm the first one, but the way I feel about it is so powerful that it is absolutely nothing to me to be the first person to walk out here and speak. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Thank you for your comments and taking the consideration. Is there someone else that would like to approach the board at this time?
My name is Michael Brown. I live at 45 Main Street in Loomisburg. First, thank you. I'm a little nervous, but this is an endorsement. It's an endorsement for Christie Will. My granddaughter is mentally retarded, and I would trust Christie with her at any time, any place. I know Christie, I know the family, I can understand the situation, or ignore my responsibility at this particular point. This strictly here as an endorsement for her, and I need you folks to listen to me. And I'm sure I've got other supporters, but I just want to take any of your time. Thank you for that. Again, I apologize, I'm very nervous, but thank you for listening to me.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your comments, Mr. Brown. Okay, the mic is over.
I'm not understanding why we just fought it in here. But I will say that there are children in special needs classes that cannot speak. I've reported a teacher, and she was removed from a list in one of my districts. I've reported other teachers. A lot of you may even know me. There has to be a zero tolerance for anyone that has gone to an institute of higher learning and willfully allow or participate in any abuse of a child. In Europe, they are blogging on us. In Australia, they are blogging on us. The state of Ohio, the Ohio Department of Education, the citizens of New York, and they're asking what's going on. I will tell you this: There's a lot of pain, not just here, but in our community. I'm not here to land base anybody. But for you people that pray, we need to lock on prayer right now for the children, and prayer for Ms. Rilson, Ms. Chappell, and the parents, and the faculty. And for the faculty that saw things and never reported it, you're going to have to come to terms with that. Through our board, I hope you weigh everything, because there are lives here, the young lives, educators, teachers, their family, their children. There's a lot here. The damage is severe, that's on the national level blogs and on the internet. Eyes are on you. And what message are you going to send to all of the students in all of the schools? And what level tolerance are we going to have in Fayette County when they're mistreated? Thank you for setting this up for us tonight. It's appreciated. Thanks very much for the comments.
I think we will take into consideration what we see in the court this evening. So if anybody has, the mic is open for you to approach.
My name is Mark Jones, and I'm here to support Mrs. Will. Yes, things have been done, and I do believe that the discipline already set up for her, she will be an amazing teacher, affection already of us. Would I trust my kid or my grandkids with Mrs. Will? Yes, I would. She is an amazing person, and we need to let her know her person. And as I said once again, my group meeting has been done, and the discipline already has been put in my ground, hoping her will be a more amazing teacher than she already was. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Anyone else?
My name is Katrina Kurtzke. My address is 2127 West Highway 35, North West. Excuse me, we are very nervous. I have adhering rock in any where it's at here. This child was my niece. So I knew that there were filth missing from all of this. I personally thought that Chris Will to say she's a bad person, personally, I don't think that. But our kids are told in classrooms, on our baseball tables, and on our football fields, that what makes a person stand out is their leadership, and not to be followers. If that did not put a nasty person out of his way, I don't feel that Miss Sheeran in the classroom was being a leader at all. If it was, this wouldn't happen for so long. Do I sit here and say, "What wish you do that"? No. But our children are suspended for being haters in classrooms. Some of them, not as harsh as what's been done. My question is, why not have been suspended? Why wish you not to be suspended pending the Board Education Disqualification? That's my question to you. I just hope everyone can hear the overall voice and let all of us know.
Thank you very much. All right. The mic is over.
I'm Jeff Reyes. I just, I'm going to support Christie Will. I don't believe she should be fired, but I think if people would take a look at her before you were making the bucking remarks against these kids, they wouldn't fall on the national media as a penalty for bullying these kids. You know, when someone says, "Morning", it doesn't necessarily mean that. What I took from the newspaper, from the interviews I took with you, I didn't want to reveal, and normally, when she was saying the inappropriate words of bullying. And I'm just adding, I want to give a substitute teaching occasion. Mrs. Will's classes are favored in the years because of the way we always organize and care to do the kids. And I feel that you guys have undertaken this very well, and I repeat, I know you're a great teacher. Thank you.
We thank you for those comments. We'll take into consideration what you have to say. Anyone else?
Hi, my name's Berlada Bailey. I'm the mother of Austin Cooper. I felt that there was a problem, someone should have known about it. I know that my son went lying. He's not a liar. He's a very good kid. He was mistreated, I don't know why. I just know that she shouldn't be working here with the child if she can handle herself. That's all I'm saying.
Anyone else?
My name is Carrie Leander. I live at the 47th and 58th, Washington Courthouse. And Cheyenne also is my niece, still has my sister's daughter earlier. You know, I have a little more emotional involvement in some of the things that we have been bringing. I try to teach my children that a person's character, who they are, is not defined by the things that they do when they know the world is watching, but it's by that one little slip that they may do when they think nobody is watching. Our children are taught, stand above what you've been taught to believe in. Stand above and stand up for those who can't stand up for themselves, or who are being done wrong. Don't just sit up in the corner and allow it to happen, because at that point, you're not part of the school, you're the part of the problem. I don't know Christie Will, so as my sister said, I can't say she's a bad person. I don't know her personally, but I do know that as an educator, as a mother, I could not sit back and allow this type of behavior to go on in my classroom or take it in any fashion. And I understand, just as I understand that you can be a voice for my niece, that there are people in here that are a voice for her, but I beg of you, please, please do not allow this thing in this system. Please do not allow other children to potentially have to go through what we have seen my niece go through. She at least can speak up and know every word of what was going on. She at least has that much of a voice. And we just ask that you now be the voice for the children who can't come forward, who potentially could have also been a part of what went on in that classroom. You are their voice, but none of us can be.
Anyone else?
Hi, my name's Sherry Boehner. I live at 1979 Loomisburg. I'm not really sure if all this works, but I have a couple of questions. It seems like nobody's willing to contest them. Black and white jacket here, which I guess is the support system. And my one question would be, why did it take so long in this panel for telling me there's problems, there's problems, for somebody to investigate? My concern is about the elementary school that has an IEP, so of course, I'm very worried that he's going to be subject to that. Do you answer that?
Again, you want to... You can ask the question again.
With the parent of the leaky room involved, she kept saying those problems my daughters were making up. Why, from what I'm hearing, does this school say that there's another problem, and checked into it? Why is that not addressed at all? Why didn't the child go so long?
I'll be honest with you as a court member, the only time I know about it is when everybody takes a plea to leave by children's service.
Then that's a problem that you have. Why would you not know about that?
We, or, I would say the superintendent, I'll answer that question, but that's the physical place to arrest him, discuss.
Isn't it the only place that we have to talk to about? Like, my argument about that, I'm not going to answer that. But here's my next question is, what uses a treadmill? How could a treadmill be needed? Where are kids going on a treadmill for what reason we are bothered? Is that normal? I don't, I don't know if that's... What is, what does that sound? Do I, who do I answer this?
You can make, you make your comments of what you want to know.
No, I'm asking a question. If board building is not the treadmill, why is there a treadmill in the school? Is that a disciplinary action? I don't, I don't get it.
I'm not the special needs teacher.
But you're the, you're the court member. You are the court member.
I, I understand.
Okay, my next, okay, my third question, here's my third question. I get an automated call on the show, TV. I get an automated call on everything. I didn't get a heads up that this was 411 at the school. I got a letter sent home talking about kids on the playground seeing a guy living in a tent. We got a heads up on that. I didn't get a heads up that there's something 411, a special needs student in the school that my son goes to. I, why do that? And then you wonder why, are you ever getting confused? You get confused because all we have to go on is what we watch on the news and what we read on Facebook. That's not a way to handle this. But nobody's telling anybody what's going on.
The questions will be answered. Mr. Roberts will be back when he's on those things.
You want to write that letter?
Yes. Okay, the mic is open.
My name is Lady Oberstake. I'm East of New York, nine 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 trace from yesterday. I had a daughter graduate, nine trace, I had a granddaughter graduate, nine trace, and I'm very proud of nine trace. I think what the school board has done is a nation right now. I see Kristy Wilt being punished, taking the ocean, has failed classes. I would trust my great granddaughter or my granddaughters, I know Kristy, I know she's paid for a lot of her supplies herself, for these kids. And I can almost swear, I have a spirit, she will not intentionally hurt any child. And I feel that the school board has done their job and I just wish all of this stuff could stop at this point so they could learn.
Thank you, ma'am. I appreciate those comments.
Hi, my name is Peter Spears. I live at twenty-one eighty-six Children's Lane. And the minute I heard that tape, everybody's coming up here and it's like he said, she said. This isn't like O.J. Simpson where you're gathering evidence. There's a tape recording of two representatives from your school brutalizing a special needs The assistant resigned. She should have been fired immediately. When you're running an organization, you have to have the faith and trust of the parents and the special needs kids. That trust has been catastrophic, the wipeout. You need to install cameras to get trust back into the school. Those kids, that child was traumatized. And if you look at the actual laws, you could almost say they broke the law. Kristy Wilt might be a nice and personal tooth fairy, but they, they not only stepped over a line, they leapt over that line and didn't look back. They used a treadmill as a form of punishment. This isn't Guantanamo Bay, Cuba, these aren't terrorists. These are special needs kids that were punished using a treadmill. I would be shocked if I ran an organization and I heard that tape. They would be in my office and fired immediately. She wouldn't have been able to even think about getting time off to have a child. She would have been fired on the spot, no questions asked. And it wouldn't have been anything personal. It's the organization that you run. That is the primary, it's the welfare of the children. That had been, that child had been traumatized. Your policy has catastrophically failed. Could you understand that as a board? That your policies and your procedures did not work? Not just one child has been traumatized, now a second one's come up and there could be more. And according to the first parent, you wouldn't even have to do a cash payout. He would have been okay if you fired both of them. You're willing to pay them over three hundred thousand dollars and not fire the teacher? That's taxpayer money. What do you think? Is she that important as a teacher that she's worth three hundred twenty-five thousand dollars? The cash payment for using a treadmill as a form of punishment? She's in charge of that classroom. She sets the culture in the town as the leader. She might have not been the one that was specifically meaning, but she stood there and watched it and let it happen. She should have immediately gone to the principal and the superintendent and had that woman fired on the spot. She didn't do that. She just let it happen. You just can't, as a leader, let something like that happen and just say, "Oh, well, it just happened." That's just two kids, special needs kids, who cares? That's what you're saying? And if you don't care about the least among you, do you really care about any of the children? That would be my question. She needs to go. And it's not because she's a bad person, it's because she stepped over the law. And that's all I have to say.
The mic is open now. Give you the opportunity for support. If not, we will continue with our order. We want to thank each other for the comments and we will take them in at some other. Mr. Roberts, the next thing would be first to have is the resignation.
Yes, Mr. Porter, you have the resignation on the letter from Raina Nett in Cap 8 at Middle School. She has very much struggled with the physical evidence of firing to assist her students. So this time she requests that we agree with your resignation.
Do you make any remarks?
I'd like to make the recommendation on request of Kristy Wilt, that she be placed on unpaid childcare leave of absence, according to our ten oh two of our negotiated agreement for renewal in two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve.
Mr. Dawson, second. Give you discussion. Go up on place. Number eight, number five, Mr. Roberts.
Five persons we would like to employ and I make that recommendation for our three persons for substitute positions, Larry Hughes, Amy Lindsay, Heidi Saunders, those being substitute custodians and substitute educational support personnel. And also on the supplementals, I'd like to make recommendations, Mr. Jay Gary, our aid director.